Five.
What was that?
Okay, we are live. Good evening. We are returning from executive session at 7:05 to our regular school committee meeting on April 27th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will be returning to executive session after this public meeting. And so we will start with public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Please state your name and address.
Olympia Card, 447 Waverly Road. I did check in with your student rep to see if I was able to share tonight, but I just wanted to really appreciate that the high school celebrated denim days this week. I'm wearing my denim jacket as a reminder of that. And denim days are days to be aware of sexual violence as well as support for survivors of sexual violence. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to continue the work of the Healthy Relationships Coalition that we had, you know, over a period of years that's been taken on by the SEL Committee. And the high school had a number of T-shirts that were painted by students that had positive messages about, you know, consent doesn't mean convince me, you know, how to be supportive of survivors. So I just really appreciated seeing that public message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay. It does not look like we have recognition on our agenda, so we will move on to consent agenda. We have minutes from April 4th, 2023. I think we need a motion to approve.
So I'll move to approve the minutes as presented in the packet of April 4th, 2023.
Second?
I'll second.
Thanks. And are we, is there a discussion? Are we ready to vote? Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Great. And then moving on to our student representatives' report, you are up.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Ben. I'm a junior at the high school. Not with me is senior Nora Alcadiji. She's the other student, our school committee rep. She was unable to join us tonight. Tomorrow is junior prom. We have over 360 students attending, so I'm sure it'll be a great night. I am also going. The French trip was last week to Nice, France. I heard it was not only a lot of fun, but it was a great opportunity for a lot of the French students to immerse themselves in the language. The band and chorus trip to Chicago was also last week. They spent four days competing in, I believe, the Chicagoland Festival, and I heard it was a great time. The robotics trip to Dallas is coming up. I believe it is at the end of May. That is the world finals, and we have a team from North Andover that is attending. Me, another junior, Patricia Voe, and a third junior, McKenna Doobie, have recently qualified for the National History Day competition, and will be attending that in Washington DC in about the middle of June. The science team took first place in the North Shore Science League this past month, and this is a continuation of our almost kind of dominance. We've done pretty well over the last couple of years, and we're pretty happy with it. Model UN had their last meeting of the year at UMass Lowell. Shout out to two students, senior Luke Sistek for winning the Best Delegate Award and junior Josita for winning the Outstanding Delegate Award. Relay for Life, a relay hosted in the NOS gym, is on May 5th. This is a fundraiser in support of cancer foundations. It is 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. on May 5th. AP exams also begin next week, and they end two weeks from tomorrow. This is a time of a good amount of stress for the student population, especially the couple hundred students that are taking those tests, but it also marks the end of the year for a lot of students. We have Senior Week in about four weeks, which is pretty exciting. But this is definitely the time of the year where a lot of students start to think about summer, but it's kind of, we got to end the year sprinting, end the year on a good note. So that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. See if we have any questions. Mr. Hicks?
I missed the part about Washington DC. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, so for National History Day, we qualified for the national competition for National History Day. We're one of two teams that's attending from Massachusetts of about 40 or 50. We're not really sure. But we'll be presenting our presentation on Vietnam War photography in DC on April 15th. So it'll be very exciting.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Excellent.
Awesome. Two quick things. I think the DECA trip is actually now.
Okay.
I know some people-
Yeah, the DECA tournament was also over April 3rd.
No, I'm sorry, not the DECA, robotics. I wrote DECA and meant to write robotics. I'm sorry. I think robotics in Dallas is now.
Okay.
It is. We're gonna do, have, we're gonna go see them tonight, and they were away.
Okay. And then this is just the last quarter, right? That just started?
Yeah.
I think after break, or did it?
It started, yeah, right after break.
Okay, so kind of a clean break, the last-
Yep.
Last little hurrah, so, okay?
Yep.
Awesome. Great. Well, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. So Relay for Life is, it's 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., you said?
Yes.
Did it used to be longer, go into the night?
I'm not sure.
You didn't go overnight, like?
I think it was 24 hours.
Yeah.
24 hour one hour.
You gotta take the easy way out.
They do more laps now.
More laps. Oh, okay.
They're faster.
Gotcha.
Ms. McGowan, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Very well done.
Thank you.
Great job, as always. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. I remember chaperoning at 3:00 in the morning. That's what stuck with me.
Okay, Dr. Gilligan, you are up.
Great. I've got a few items for the report tonight. Do you want to take the Assistant Superintendent out of order, or would you?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Right, that's down in new business. No, where am I going?
If we-
Yeah, down in new business.
If we take the confirmation of the new Assistant Superintendent out of order?
Yes. Right. Are you guys okay if we go out of order? So we can get our new superintendent to not have to stay here all night long?
So folks, before I introduce Pam, I'd just say, I was really pleased with the process. We had 41 initial applicants. We had sitting administrators from across the region, and I think that's a testament to this community and the staff that works here. But we had a great committee made up of teachers, parents, administrators, and it was quite a rigorous process. So we had an initial interview after the initial screening. We interviewed eight, and then that was narrowed to four very strong finalists. And the finalists had an opportunity to come in and meet with teachers. They had a chance to meet with the curriculum team. They had a chance to do instructional rounds, a performance task. And then we had a parent night at the Stevens Memorial Library. And really thanks to Kathy Keenan down there. She does an unbelievable job setting that up. So in having said all that, I'd like to welcome our new appointment to Assistant Superintendent. This is Pam Lathrop. Many, some people do know Pam. She was, about 15 years ago, she left here in North Andover as the principal of the Franklin School, and quite a lot's changed since then. Pam is currently the principal of High Plains Elementary in Andover. It is a Title I school with 41 different languages within the building. She is one of the only schools in the entire region that was named by the state in Mass D E S C in 2019 and again in 2020 as a school of recognition for their high growth and for exceeding targets. She has a few advanced degrees, but more recently she went to William James College and got a certification in social emotional learning and brought that back to her team. And we're thrilled. I know she's gonna do a great job. We're gonna miss Ms. Marks, and I'm sure there'll be a long celebration of Ms. Marks, a couple of weeks anyway. But this is Pam Lathrop, and I'm gonna ask tonight that you vote to confirm my appointment and give her a chance to just introduce herself, and if you guys have any questions for Pam.
Thank you. I am gonna have Ms. Marks on speed dial, I'm sure. But as Greg said, I'm Pam Lathrop. I am just thrilled to have this appointment to come back to North Andover. As Dr. Gilligan said, I was here 15 years ago. But prior to being the principal at Franklin School, I did start my career as a teacher in North Andover. And even before that, I was a student teacher in North Andover. So I think I said when I was here for an interview, I feel like my roots have been firmly planted in the soil here in North Andover. I am a resident of this town as well, and although I did take a 15-year hiatus, I went across town, I have kept very involved in our town and doing some things, you know, throughout the town, but also looking at some of the things that are happening in the school system. I feel so fortunate to be able to return to this district. You have outstanding educators here. You have dedicated community members, parents like yourselves, who are working here, and there's lots of great work that's been, you know, that's been going on. I know North Andover has changed in the 15 years that I have been away, and I have changed too. It's what some of the work that I have done in Andover and some of the experiences I've had have led me to believe that I can do this job. And I'm really looking forward to working with the administrative team under Dr. Gilligan and with the outstanding educators. I had such a nice time visiting. I went on instructional rounds at the high school, and I enjoyed talking to some of the students and listening to the things that they had to say and participating in some of the classes. I might brush up on some of my science skills, but I think I did okay. But I'm really just very pleased to be here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we want to go around and see if there's a question? Mr. Hicks, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Not always used to that. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. I'm excited to have a brief moment to talk with you. So I appreciate all the accolades that everyone has said, and I am going to trust that they are absolutely 100% true. One of the things that I've been worried about and thinking about a lot lately because of my own son's experience and my experience working in schools is making sure that our literacy programming continues to make the necessary adjustments that we have started the past couple of years with Ms. Marks. We have a new curriculum happening in the elementary schools with some really great work with Witten Wisdom and moving away from the, some of the other stuff into more evidence-based science of reading stuff. And I noticed that that's not necessarily what is highlighted on your resume, but it's like some assurance that we're gonna continue doing that work and that those key shifts will continue to happen for our kids.
Yeah, that's a great question. While it may not be highlighted on my resume, I think the science of reading is really a foundation that we all have as educators. I'm really, I'm well-versed in the science of reading, and I think that, well, you know, I work for a community that does use a balanced literacy approach right now. We have looked at that work, and we have made corrections and changes. So we have Haggerty, which you also have in the elementary setting. And I've done a lot of work in terms of looking at some of the data within my own building and doing some work. I talked a little bit about that in one of my meetings here. Doing some of our own work in terms of things that we need to make sure our kids have in the schoolhouses as well. So I think it's a balance between, but I think, you know, we also, Andover is moving forward to adopting G O Ts, and I know that's in your elementary schools. I, you know, I have done my own work as a teacher, which was a long time ago now, in terms of reading, but I feel confident that I understand the science of reading and being able to continue the work with Witten Wisdom and the other programs that you already have in place.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McDonat?
I'll just be brief. I mean, personally, I've known you, you know, for a long time. You're a pretty speedy runner, much faster than I am right now. But I think when I, you know, heard that you were gonna be named the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, you know, there was just a lot of excitement, and I heard from a lot of people in town how excited they were. And I know, you know, over the past years, you know, how excited and passionate you've been at your elementary school. And, I mean, it's a huge loss for them, but we're delighted, I think, to have you back and welcome you back to North Andover. So you can always come home again.
You can always come home. I think, I'm not sure I'm that speedy anymore, and I definitely was not as fast as Mr. McDevitt. I can remember a time when North Andover made some changes in reading in the elementary and did move away from some of the reading instructional specialists in the building. And it is probably the only time I was able to keep up with Mr. McDevitt running because at the time I worked in Andover. But I was so upset by it that I ran with him to Smolak Farm, keeping a pace that was nearly killed me. And why it was so important to have reading teachers in the elementary school setting.
I'm just gonna say that that might have been one of the last times I ran, because I thought I was keeping up with you. But you were a very strong advocate, and I think we ended up bringing them back-
You did.
-afterwards. So you're very convincing as well.
Ms. Koenig, do you have any questions?
I just wanna say, welcome. I think, you know, I have a lot of trust and faith in the process that's been taken. You've gotten through your resume. It looks very, it looks wonderful. You seem to have a lot of experience. And I think we're blessed to have somebody with your expertise coming back to North Andover and working with our school system. So I want to say welcome. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I also want to welcome you. I don't have the history that these folks do with you, but I'm curious if you, and this may not be a fair question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
Okay.
Do you have sort of, based on your interview process and the things you've seen so far, do you kind of have a number, like a high priority thing you want to attack first?
Well, I think that, you know, it's important to have an entry plan when you're coming into the school district. I think my priority is to get to know the people that work here. I think it's really important to have a relationship with the people that you're working with. This is hard work. And so that would be one of my first things, is getting to know all the schools, getting into the schools. You know, I said I became a principal because there were things that I didn't like as a classroom teacher when I would start to see principals who weren't being invested in the classroom. And I'm moving into this position because I think it's really important that Central Office remembers that the people we work for are not necessarily in this building, but in the schoolhouse. So it's really important for me when I start this job to go into all of the schoolhouses here. Obviously, my background is highly elementary, so I will want to make sure that I have a plan to familiarize myself with middle school and the high school and then really understand the curriculum pieces here and what role I may play in that. But, you know, I've thought about my entry plan. I've talked about it before. You know, I'm happy to think a little bit, you know, obviously meet with Dr. Gilligan. But it is about knowing, getting to know the people, making relationships, and seeing what's happening in the schoolhouses, because that's how you make change.
All right. Good answer. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
And I'll just echo what everybody else said. Welcome, and we're glad to have you. I can't wait to see what happens in the future, and I think it's gonna be all great things.
Yeah, it's, I'm just, I'm thrilled. I mean, Ms. Marks has done a beautiful job in the position. I feel like just the few times I've been able to chat with her, it'd be a nice place to be able to walk into. Things are really good here, and it's nice to be able to come into something that's working well and hopefully offer some of the things that I've been able to do as well and work as a team. I'm really excited to work with adults and still keep my hands with children. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Do we need to, right, but do we need to suspend rules to vote? Or, no, because it's, okay, all right.
It's really a vote of affirmation, really.
Right, that's why I wasn't sure. Okay, all right. So are we ready to vote? So we don't need a motion or anything?
Yes, so I will move to approve Pam Lathrop as the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning effective July 1st, right? July 1st?
July 1st.
Okay, July 1st.
Second.
I don't think there's discussions. We're ready to vote. Yes? Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna just walk Pam off for one second. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Marks to talk about some professional development we had just this week in our schools.
I know that with the situation in the country, often with schools and safety, it becomes a big issue for people. So prior to some of the more recent school incidences, we had talked, Greg and I had talked about getting some updated PD in the schools around safety training. Just with COVID, things were different. Kids were spread out. The focus was a little bit different. So just to kind of bring the attention back to that. And honestly, I'm gonna just shout out to St. Mike's because on our January PD day, I went to St. Mike's because they had a trainer there, and I was very interested in what that person had to say, and there was some very good information there. Some of our school resource officers from the town were there as well. And then Lieutenant Folds and I talked a lot about that afterwards. So this Wednesday, just yesterday, our middle school Sergeant Atkinson and Kittredge had a police officer at the school along with a PowerPoint that we had put together just to talk about school training. And one of the things that really resonated with me that I wanted teachers to hear in terms of just thinking about the setup in their classroom and what was going on was that what they know is that the perpetrator comes in, and they want to do the most damage that they can in the time that they have, because the police are gonna get there pretty quickly. So if you're really paying attention to making, like, if you're in your classroom, making sure that somebody can't see in there and can't get in that classroom, they're gonna move on because they want to try to achieve their goal. So it was kind of shocking to hear that, but I wanted teachers to hear that as well. So making sure, we talked again about making sure you have something to, you know, go over windows. One of the things that he showed was, you know, we practiced an Alice drill a number of years ago during opening sessions, talked about kind of piling furniture and kids in front of a door. What they talked about is like building a chain. So, you know, from the door to like the wall across, you know, have kids know practices beforehand where you push the desks and the bookcases so that there's no room to be able to move that door. So they jiggle that door. They try to get in, you know, hopefully it's locked as well. But if they're trying to, you know, use some sort of force, that they're gonna, they're not gonna be able to get anywhere, and they're gonna move on. They're not gonna see or hear anything in that classroom and move on. So we talked about that. The other thing we talked about too, and I know a couple of the elementary schools were able to include these people there. But for example, I talked to a parent on the phone a few weeks ago who is a recess monitor, noon attendant. So what do they do when they're outside? You know, those people also need to know what to do. So we talked a little bit about that. We talked about doing some continued training in the fall. Obviously, I won't be the one putting that together, but somebody will. And practicing in inviting those people in to know what to do as well. So I checked in with all the principals this morning, and all the trainings went really well, which I was really pleased to hear because it does create a lot of anxiety among people. It creates anxiety in me. You know, I feel very responsible for the students and the teachers in the community, so we want to make sure that we have that safety there for them. So on the 10th, May 10th, the remaining schools will also have that training. We'll have a police officer there, and we'll do that as well. So.
So, thank you, Lorraine. I feel fortunate that we have this type of relationship with the police department. It is special, and many communities don't have it, such a strong relationship. All right. Under the superintendent's report, the Crest Executive Director, I think last time was mentioned. She is leaving to go to Vermont, just not a collaborative up there, is my understanding. But the job closes tomorrow, and I will keep you posted as that progresses and as we move forward. And then just a couple other things. The, this Saturday, I don't know if anyone participates in the baseball softball parade that starts downtown on Water Street to Kyle Thomas?
Eight o'clock in the morning.
I think it kicks off at nine, but you have to line up at eight.
Yeah.
But they have the high school softball players, the baseball players. They have the school band plays in it. Last year, I had the good fortune to be invited to be like the grand marshal. And this year, I'm having, Chad Jackson is joining me to lead that parade. So it's on our website. It's this Saturday, nine, you know, 8:15, I think you gotta line up on Water Street.
I don't know. It was pretty early.
Behind St. Mike's parking lot. And it's a cool event, and we've been promoting it on behalf of, you know, the boosters and Little League because for a lot of our kids downtown, like, they come out, they watch, and, you know, it's not as big a parade as some of the others in town. Some years, I don't know if you call it a parade with the visitors, but spectators, but it's gonna, it should be fun. So excited about that. And then Mr. McDevitt had asked a while back, or one of the meetings, Jim, is there a chance you could project the slide on the last day of school? About the last day of school? When, when the last day of school was?
All right. I ask a lot of questions.
Where is this slide? Where is this?
The last, Michelle McHugh sent it to you.
The student learning time slide?
The one on-
Guidance on the 180D? Okay, I have that.
So if you guys haven't, some folks have been starting to say, when's the last day of school? And Mr. McDevitt remembers from years ago, like kind of an obscure rule. I think this was written by David Driscoll, which goes way back. But anyway, the last day of school right now is scheduled for June 16th. That's a Friday. And based on the snow days we've used, and some of the folks remember that in the past, we had used five snow days, and there were certain days you didn't have to make up. But here's what the rule says. So it's June 16th, and I thought I'd just go over it with you. Any days lost, because of whether it's health, weather, safety, between the first day of school and March 31st must be made up by rescheduling full days of school to have 100- school and March 31st must be made up by rescheduling full days of school to have 180-day year. All days lost, for the same reasons, from April 1st to June 1st, must be made up to ensure the 180-day year, or at least until the district has reached its previously scheduled 185th, whichever comes first. And that's the, kind of the change, I think, Mr. McDevitt remembered at one of our meetings, because we've always had five snow, we've used five snow days quite often, but we really haven't had snow in a couple of years. It's only been a few storms and timing. So I just wanted to go over that, the last day will be June 15th barring any unforeseen...
Tuesday 15th?
16, 16, sorry. June 16th, Friday, barring any unforeseen circumstances.
And it is a half day.
It is a half day, yes it is. If we have any unforeseen circumstances, the Monday is a holiday, Juneteenth, and we would come back on the Tuesday.
Feel like Cliff Clavon.
But if those unforeseen circumstances happen after June 1st, then we're all good.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway.
So was that no unforeseen circumstance?
Let's hope not.
It happens.
It can. And the other thing is, you know, I, I saw it on Twitter last night, after the track meet yesterday, the track team worked with Stachis and the movement from Michael Gorman from Methuen, he works with the homeless population in Lawrence and they do a weekly dinner. And they were all, I think they were over the Buckley Bus Terminal, but they served dinner last night and did a really terrific job. And so that was the Boys and Girls Track Team and we're really proud of them, so. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the Chair's Report. It's, I feel like it's the, it's like the constant item under the Chair's Report is the Educator Hall of Fame. The nominations are due April 30th and I think Michelle said there are no new nominations, so I'm not really sure what that means, but that is the update on that.
It just means that, so folks who have been nominated in the past, their application moves forward and there are a few that have been nominated in the past for consideration this year. Barring uncoming in, unforeseen by April 30th.
By April 30th, which is Sunday. Okay, and then we're gonna go through the Liaison Subcommittee assignments and I think you should all have a copy. So if we would just, I would just go through each of them. Legal affairs, Ms. Konig, you had reached out and said you would be interested in that, if that's agreeable to everyone else? Okay. For teacher negotiations, we'll keep the same, Mr. McDevitt, Mr. Brown, Ms. Picard as our committee. Teaching assistance, I think we can add my name on there unless anyone else wants to take over.
No.
Sure?
No, you should have the question.
Let me ask you something.
Sure.
Is there any logic to me doing that because I'm already involved with the teacher one or is, or is it better to have two? What's your experience though, in this for a while?
I think generally we have one for the TAs and two for the teachers and I've been going to the teaching assistant ones, except for this week.
Okay, okay, makes sense.
Yep.
Mr. Petrowski, should we add another line for negotiations with the administrative assistants?
Yes.
And I am currently doing that with Dr. Mealy.
Great. We do not have anyone for the custodians and they are next year?
Next year, yes.
And I did not have anyone reach out to me for custodians.
We really don't need to assign that until probably September, October.
Correct.
Do we normally review this in the fall?
Yeah.
Or we just assign it as it comes up?
It will come, right.
Okay.
They'll, they'll give us a list, just like all the other groups have, after the start of the year.
Okay, great. Policy is myself and Mr. Hicks. School building, Mr. Hicks. Fundraising?
Quick question on that, is there technically Mr. McDevitt as well for the Kittredge?
Yes.
School?
We probably should have two of them.
Yep.
That should just be listed as NAM.
And then?
Oh yeah, two separate lines, like one NAMs and then Kittredge.
Oh, so Joe, your NAMs?
Yeah.
Yep, we'll make two lines for that. Okay, good catch. Fundraising, Mr. McDevitt, I think that I'm kind of on there too, right? With the Subcommittee that we've been doing, Jim? Or is that different?
It's different.
Okay, good. The Hall of Fame has gone to the whoever is the Vice Chair, which we will hopefully appoint in a little bit. Okay, we have liaisons. BRC, remind me what BRC is?
Building Respectful Communities.
Why can I not remember that?
It's also Borderline Running Club.
That's what is in my mind, that's why, cuz I'm like, I don't think it's the running club.
Because I wouldn't, I would definitely not say this, I'd be happy to do that with Mr. Petrowski.
Are you sure you don't wanna be part of the running club, Mr. Hicks?
I do not wanna be a member of a running club.
Okay, noted. Budget Communications is the Chair and Vice Chair. And then Crest, do we need a representative or is that? I know that there's been conversation of just the Superintendent, is that not a good use of your time? Do you want one of us? It's a daytime commitment.
It's a daytime commitment. It is right, currently the Board is served only by Superintendents and that's evolved over time. At one point it was like half Superintendent, half School Committee. It's certainly something I could do for now and we could reassess or, you know, think if anyone else has any.
I haven't heard from the committee about Crest, but I also don't know if we had questions about it or?
So I was considering stepping up for either that or NA CPAC. I think the time though, for me, might be better spent with NA CPAC.
So CPAC, we said we were gonna divide amongst all of us.
Oh, is that what we're gonna do?
We had decided that last week or the last meeting.
Last meeting.
We were gonna rotate that.
Okay, that's probably a good idea.
I'd be fine to take Crest for the remainder of the year as part of the hiring, if, unless someone has a burning desire to be a participant.
Sounds like Mr. Brown might have a burning desire.
I don't know if it's burning. That might be, that might be.
Smell smoke.
Might be a little bit overstated. No, it's just an area of interest, but it's, it's all Superintendents now?
I think that hiring corner is super important, like that's a big deal for them right now. They've had same executive director for a really long time and so I just.
Oh, use your microphone. I thought you were close to.
Just again, for the regular remainder of the year, I mean, there, again, that is, that.
Hiring aspect to Crest is in terms of, you know, what type of, I don't know, the candidates and that process, I think is important for someone to definitely, to be there. So I mean, one of the Superintendents, I think, is, the rest of them Superintendent's, again, I'm, I'm the one who essentially deals with their services and, again, I just think it's an important aspect. So I think if, if I was gonna suggest whatever for next year, but I think during this hiring process, it's important for you to go.
Would it be one or the other or would you both go?
I can, as Superintendent, I think I can go to any meeting. I, I think in this case, in terms of the hiring, you know, I would replace Helen to get a new executive person, a new executive director on board and then we could certainly reassess it at the end of this.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, we'll look at it and after, in the fall.
I, I think Mr. Brown could go as well, but I think North Andover only gets one vote.
Okay, that makes sense. Yep. So maybe if you wanted to go and attend and see what it was like?
Yeah, that actually, yeah, that would probably be worthwhile.
Would that work? Okay.
And Dave, if you, if you want, I can talk to you a little bit about what services we utilize from them too, just to have a, like a kind of over the years sort of, cuz they've, they've changed and expanded a lot over the years, so if you, if you wanna go, I can give you a little information.
Yeah, the reason for my interest is just in the campaign, right? I heard from a lot of parents and, you know, so I feel like a little bit more knowledge for me would be helpful.
Okay. Okay, SEAM is Dr. Gilligan, Legislative Liaison is me, Foundation for Education, Mr. McDevitt, PTO Presidents, Ms. Konig, did you?
Did you say that about that one?
Yeah, I thought you did, okay. Health Advisory Council, I have not heard from anybody about that. Is that a daytime?
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, it, it takes place approximately three times a year.
Okay.
And it involves, Ms. Bazak runs it and.
I'll step up for that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
CPAC, we had discussed at the last meeting that we will rotate that responsibility. They do have a meeting May 1st, which is Monday. I'm happy to go if others are not available. We can have two members there.
What time is it?
7:00 PM and it's virtual.
Oh, let's see, Monday?
Yeah.
I have a, I have to present a, I have another presentation.
So you have a commitment?
I could do it.
All right.
Is that May 3rd?
First. Yeah, it's Monday.
Oh, I know why I'm thinking that, okay.
It's virtual, right?
It's virtual.
I can do it.
All right, and I may join you if, Mr. McDevitt, you're not going to or?
Uh, no, you can join.
Okay.
And then, Ms. Petrowski, I can do the one, the next one.
Okay, yeah, maybe we need to get a, a schedule going. That's a good point, it'll be June, it'll be June, so we'll set up a schedule maybe for the fall then.
But this is the last one.
No, they'll, they'll do one in June.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they, I get their schedule over the summer, we set them up for the summer, so.
Okay, and I'm sure we can all be flexible as needed sometimes things come up. Mr. Hicks, you are a representative for the Town Diversity Committee and I think that is it. Anyone have questions, thoughts, concerns, comments? Okay. All right, so we need to move on to the Vice Chair vacancy and I think that means Mr. McDevitt needs to take over.
Yes, so part of our policy, just so you guys know, is that the longest-serving member actually does anything to do with the reorg. We may wanna consider changing it at some point. I think it's kind of just to make sure that it's neutral as opposed to whoever the Chair is, but, so this is one of the fun things that I get to do, for being a lifer.
BDE for your reading enjoyment?
Yes, for anyone at home.
Policy BDE.
Policy BDE.
Yes. So I basically chaired this part and then it goes right back over to the Chair, Petrowski. So I would entertain any nominations for the vacant position for Vice Chair.
Mr. McDevitt, I would nominate you as the vice chair.
I would accept.
Does it need a second?
Oh, sorry, yeah, we'd need a second.
I'll second.
All right, okay. Thanks, it would've been embarrassing.
And then we need, oh, sorry.
Is it true when you started, you had no gray?
I did, yes. And I could run fast. All right, other nominations?
Just for the record, I'm interested, however, I think this should be somebody who's got some experience, not somebody who's on the Board for two weeks, so supportive.
Yeah, so that actually is a good point and clarification. We typically reorg the first meeting in June, so this is really for like two meetings, so.
By state law, we have to do that at the, by the end of our last meeting in June, we have to reorg for the following year.
Right, so typically we do it the first meeting, just in case we cancel the last meeting, for whatever reason.
Okay, and that's, so all the positions are, all the, those positions, I guess they're called, are for one year. Your Chair for one year, your Vice Chair for one year, your Clerk for one year.
Yep, exactly. All right, any other nominations? All right, Mr. Hicks?
Overvoting, yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
An elbow yes, so, 5-0, all right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'll be hopefully celebrating this and the Celtics, but back to you.
Okay. There is no old business.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Previously during, I think it was during either Chair's Report or Superintendent's Report, we had done a quick update on the Middle School Building Committee progress.
Yes.
And there has been some and I wanted to, I know it's on the, it wasn't reasonably expected, so I think we could still.
I'm happy to add that in as a, as a add-on. Do you wanna add it into my Chair's Report? Is that where we put it last time?
I think that, I couldn't remember, it's Chair's Report, right? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it was, yeah, I think we're good. Just, we had a meeting yesterday and we are gearing up to, we've put out the, the call for bid contractor preapproval. There's a process where they get preapproved and then they go to bid on the project.
It's like buying a house.
But we had, I think, 10 generals, general contractors put in the paperwork for preapproval, which is fantastic.
It's great.
That helps in terms of cost and a lot of subs come in as well, so it's really exciting. The bid documents should be ready to go out officially for bid just after approval at town meeting and we're looking at then being able to get the, all the things approved and whatnot and move towards mid to late summer, starting on the project, which is really exciting. We also approved the exterior landscaping plan, what that would look like as part of the design package, really nice, make sure that the, the four square and the basketball hoop are in, located in the correct location. There were a couple of options and we chose a really good one and we also approved the, so not the exact dates of the phasing, but the general understanding of how the building project will be phased over time. So the general idea is in the first year of the project, we'll be building the addition in the back corner, so that's during, hopefully during this next school year. And then the second year of the project, we'll use that space to move sections of the school into that space and then do the renovations of the old spaces on the new heaters and, and carpets and mechanical systems are getting updated in three different sections and then in summer of '25, before it's fully done, doing the section that includes the auditorium and the main offices. So in general, a two-year project, year one is the addition and year two is using that to then complete all the renovations.
Was there a presentation that was shared with some visuals?
Yeah, and we, we decided which slides would then be also part of the presentation that will be a part of the presentation at town meeting. But the, but in the agenda that was shared on the town website, there is a, there are the things to look at.
I would love.
We're gonna put some on our website as well.
Yeah.
I just made a note that I'll work tomorrow and we'll get a, something you can click on to get updates, including the phasing and, and all of that.
I think it would be really helpful if we can have that for our next meeting as well, just to have a visual and a, I'm a visual learner, so as you're talking, I'm trying to picture it.
Yeah, and just like in terms of like how I understood is, as my kids go into middle school, in sixth grade, they'll be building the addition, in seventh grade, they'll be renovating everything and then everything will be ready for their eighth grade year. So like that's the, sort of the easy way to also understand like what's gonna happen[1671.14] So like, that's the, sort of the easy way to also understand like what's gonna happen in the next few years. Um, we've thought a lot about how construction vehicles are going to access the site, and where they're gonna enter and exit, making sure that the neighborhood in that area stays happy, um, because that's really important, and make sure that the trucks go in and out, because some of the trucks will be big, through the proper locations, uh, making sure that the, the road will be the path up to the ABECC, um, and accessing buses that way afterwards will be good, um, so, yeah. Yep, and like how the building is accessed, and where construction workers are going to be, uh, required to park, and how they get in and out of the building, when they're in the building during the renovation portion, how those are, we're gonna make, the way that the stairwells will be secluded for their use and not for student use, all those, all those little details, they're very mindful of, uh, making sure, um, our students stay safe both in lots of different ways.
I have a question about the workers, if they're going to be on campus during.
Decorated.
Thank you, that was my question.
That is one of the requirements of, for the, uh, I don't know if it's part of the prequalification, but part of the, of the awarding of the bid, that is one of the things that is part of the bid package.
Thank you, you read my mind, yeah, okay.
I have another question that you may not, may or may not know, but with, if, if the RecPlex were to be able to move forward at some point during this phase, God, I hope so, um, has Pep, has that been taken into consideration in the, in the development plan? You know what I'm saying, like where they're not, where you're not having conflicting construction issues?
They're aware of the possibility, and they're not concerned that they, they'll be, they're confident they'll be able to coordinate.
Yes, and access the site. Yet even more truck traffic and materials going in and out and stuff like that, but they at least considered that in the plan.
Yes, they're aware that both projects could be happening at the same, around the same time, and making sure it all works for everybody involved.
Was there any discussion with that drop-off at middle school and then the breakfast club at ABECC that was happening simultaneously while construction's going on?
Yeah, we're gonna control the hours in which they, and there'll be periods when they cannot be coming in or out, and that's all of our different drop-offs and pickups.
The trucks can't, and they have to either get in before or wait to a certain time, like there's some, can't get there right now, blackout.
But there's not gonna be like a lane taken away.
No lane taken away, no, nope.
No, they are being very thoughtful and mindful about what those, all those requirements should look like for the, for the bidding process.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, we don't have old business. We've checked off item A on our new business, and then item B is a first read. Support of our annual town meeting for Articles eighteen and twenty-two. There is a letter in your packet. Any discussion?
Where's twenty-two, am I? Oh, sorry, twenty-two is.
Page or two behind, sorry.
Yeah, yep.
Sorry.
So twenty-two is the, the, the full budget for the town, right, general funding?
No, twenty-two is capital improvement plan.
No.
No.
Eighteen, or eighteen, sorry.
Twenty-two is budget.
And that's the, that's the complete, it says general budget, so that's, that's everything, right?
Uh, operating, they call it.
Operating budget.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
The.
No, it's not just schools, it's.
Correct, all, all departments you can see there, yep.
So Article eighteen includes the monies for the middle school construction renovations, the first year of that project at least, among many other wonderful things.
So yes, the twenty-nine point nine million is for all, um, capital funding for next year.
Other questions?
And just to be clear, this has gone to print?
So these recommendations will be made at town meeting?
Yeah, this is not one the school committee has to take a formal recommendation where it says like, select board.
Right.
School committee, uh, the, the next one will be, um, they will ask for the school committee's recommendation that will be made public on the town, at town meeting on the floor.
Are we ready?
You mean the next one, our, our Article twelve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Are we good with, um, item B?
So we'll, we'll formally vote to recommend it next meeting, is that what happens? Because this is for.
Support.
It's a letter, just a letter of support.
As written here.
Yeah.
Well-written letter.
Thank you.
Petrowski.
And during town meeting, they will say, and the school committee also gives support, based, or doesn't, based on our vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then moving on to, um, I, Article twelve. Article, Article twelve is a little confusing to read.
One of the things I did, I think it might be helpful for people watching at home, is where it says background information, I included the, um, slide of the day on Article twelve that, uh, the town has pushed out. Um, I'd be happy to go over that, just the basics.
Appreciate that.
So Article twelve is the school committee, school building committee bylaw, so this article creates a new bylaw regarding school building committees. The bylaw, which was collaborative effort between multiple parties and boards, creates a streamlined and inclusive process to make certain that we create the best possible building committees to assist with school building projects. There'll be seven official voting members and at least four ex officio members, um, and that's the background, the more details in the actual article itself.
So I think part of the reason for this is, um, there was some ambiguity when we were going, uh, to establish a school building committee, and at the time, I don't, I don't think it's ever been done before, but we basically had two major building committees, um, that were gonna be happening simultaneously. The town charter was a little bit unclear in terms of whether or not we're gonna have one, whether or not we're having two, kind of how all of that happened, so this helps to streamline this. I think also when this was written, um, and I think it was like in the thirties or something, um, message at school building authority didn't necessarily exist, which obviously is now, is a huge factor in terms of, um, a source of funding for this. So it's kind of relevant that we update this. Um, we do already have, um, separate building committees for both Kittredge and, uh, the North Andover Middle School, um, but this works to solidify that. So that's a little bit of explanation I think I would throw out.
We're the, question, we're the, the current committees, you, you're on one, you're on the other, right? Were they, is this the formula that was used for those?
No.
Okay.
Was appointed by select board.
The full committee was appointed by select board?
Correct.
In both cases?
In both cases.
Yep.
Okay, so this is now to establish a process that's more formal.
Solidify the process, is probably a better way to put it.
Okay.
I think it's good to have clear process, um, established. Um, I think that's always helpful.
Agreed.
Regardless of what the process might be, I'm a fan of having clear procedures to follow.
I agree with that, and this has already gone to print, so it's as is.
Well, if they don't like it, we can.
So, yeah, so I, I'm just gonna say, I mean, I, I have a lot of challenges with this, um, and, you know, I, I read this, um, when did we read it, Monday? Monday we looked at it, I mean, there, there's definitely some, there's some grammar, there's some things that happen, I think, in the process that I think are a little bit confusing. Um, if you look at the third paragraph, it represents, you know, or it, it says that this committee shall consist of seven voting members. The selection committee shall endeavor, there's nowhere else in this document that actually references the word selection committee, so what is that? It never really kind of defines that pretty well, in my opinion. Um, and I think that, um, the process, when you get into it, if you look down at the membership selection, um, if you look at number two, you know, it must be a unanimous vote between, um, the chairs of the select board, the school committee, and the town made moderator, or their designees. So there's three people, it must be a unanimous vote to move a applicant forward. Um, in the instance that there's a, that, that a unanimous decision cannot be made within one week, um, then the majority rule will decide. The challenge with that is, there's three people, majority is actually two-thirds, like there can never be anything but either two-thirds, like majority just, I don't know.
Yeah.
I may be too nitpicky with what that is, um, but a majority is automatically two-thirds with that, um, and then it kind of just moves forward into, um, that the, sorry, so based upon that, they go to, they come to the school committee for us, um, and it has to be unanimous in order to move forward to the select board. It, I'm sorry, it has to have a majority, uh, in order for us to move anybody forward, but like, let's say ten people come through, and we never reach majority on any of them, does the process just stop? It could happen, I'm not saying. So I feel like there's a gap in there. Like, let's say somebody came in, somebody was absent, we don't hit majority. So I, I feel like it, there, this is a good effort to make this a little bit clearer, but I, I feel like there's a lot of, um, ambiguity.
That's requiring a majority vote, wouldn't that automatically say, okay, we don't have enough here to make a majority, we have to wait till the next meeting for a vote?
Yeah, is, would, would lack of quorum prevent us from meeting any way?
Quorum is three.
Well, majority, so if we were to come to a meeting and we say, okay, this requires a majority vote, we don't have a majority, wouldn't we just postpone it to the next meeting?
So if there's a time point, that could be tricky, and I think there's also, there's ambiguity, is by majority vote of those present at the meeting, or of the entire select, of the entire school committee?
That's what I was wondering.
There's a.
Yeah, that's confusing.
I think there's something there that may, that could make it hard.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't, I think everybody's got the best intentions, but, I, I mean, I just, I don't know, I think we should probably touch base with the select board and just make sure that if there's gonna be a modification, that we're not doing it necessarily on the fly at town meeting, but we work with council in advance or something.
And I do think it, we need to have clarification on what the selection committee is, because you're right, it is only referenced once.
Well, I think, yeah, the, where we say selection committee up top, and then we call it member selection in section.
Right.
Is that the same?
That, that is the thing, but that's because it's not named the same thing, there is some confusion there.
Yep.
And that leads to ambiguity and confusion during the process, right? So like we said, even if we don't agree with the process, a process is necessary.
Right, I think that the, the intent there probably is that the school board, that us, we, the school committee is the selection committee, right?
We're not.
No.
No? Well, because this, well, the reason I said that.
It's the selection committee, so that's why I think it needs to be, like, there needs to be an additional number in here where it says the selection committee will consist of
Correct.
the Chair of the Select Board, Chair of the School Board, and the Town Moderator.
Right.
Um, before you get to advertisement and interviews of them, we need to add in a, a point zero.
And then whatever you call it first, you need to continue to call it the same thing.
We need to define selection committee better.
So what would be the options to, to have a discussion to see if they withdraw it and fix the wording, or for us to say, we're not, potentially not gonna recommend it?
I mean, I would probably say we should touch base with the select board.
Because it's too late to modify at this point, it's already in print.
Right.
Right, but we could, we could bring forward a modification at town meeting.
But it seems like there's too much that needs amending, to be like, as it, or amending X, Y, Z, I mean.
On the fly, yeah, yeah.
I think to Andrew's point, it is their article that's on there, it's not, um, the schools, and I think someone, if they volunteered to touch base with the select board, could probably do that.
Right, right, and that's what I'm saying, is that, that would be the next step, to say, this is.
They've already, just sorry to interrupt the process, they've already looked at this as a select board.
Yes.
And voted favorable action on it.
Yeah.
Right.
So if they didn't amend it or withdraw it, then us, as if we're putting in a recommendation, need to have that serious discussion of what we would say, right?
Right, so we should, we should suggest that they amended to fix this, right?
Well, just some clarification.
Yeah.
So. I'm happy to touch base with Janice, um, Melissa, whoever, um, I just, I, I think they probably, I, I, they've already voted on it, it's already gone to print. I don't remember their meeting schedule, but town meeting's four weeks away, three weeks away, so.
But like your question says, if they, if there's, if there's not time, or it doesn't work out that we can.
They're looking for the next meeting for this board to take a vote
Right.
on favorable or unfavorable action, and, um, or maybe no vote, I don't know if that's ever been done.
So if it's not favorable action, it still goes to town meeting for vote?
Right.
Regardless of what was said.
They're looking for us to.
Right, well, it says here, school committee recommendation.
Provide a recommendation, be announced at town meeting.
Right, so even if, it's a, does it matter if we make it, but I mean, we could let them know what we're gonna do ahead of time, but technically, we don't have to until town meeting.
I, I think if we're mostly in favor of what this is, and we've got some clarification, then it would give them the opportunity to perhaps make those clarifications, and the article could be amended possibly before town meeting.
It's gone out of print, but they can.
Yeah.
That's my question.
They can present something that's been amended since.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because it's that print doesn't, that doesn't mean you can't do anything, or only make amendments, they can say, we fixed the language and we're got, and present, and share it with people at that point.
Right.
On screen.
Yep.
All right, so you, so Andy, Andrew, you're gonna?
I, I will touch base with Janice.
Okay, because those are great points, I mean.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think defining selection committee in the second section, and clarifying what we mean by majority vote, would be two things that I think would be good.
Yeah, and, and you know, again, you know, it said, or it's stated in basically that first paragraph, you know, there was ambiguity on whether or not what happened when we had more than one school building committee at a time, and it says, you know, there can be more than one, multiple committees can exist, because that was kind of like, is it the same people for both committees, because that was gonna be an overwhelming amount of work.
Right, especially with two different timelines.
Yeah.
Right, right, and.
And requi, requirements and funding sources and all the things.
Right, and Kittredge hasn't even started, but, you know, you're already involved in meetings with, with them, so, um, or, I mean, Kittredge, Stumpsuff has started, but anyway.
Okay. Any good? Okay, item D, school choice for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Great, uh, that's me.
That's you.
So, um, this would be the first reading. Each year, the, uh, DESE requires that each district, um, have their school committee hold, after holding a public hearing, consider whether the district will participate as a receiving district in the school choice program. And we have to notify, um, the state by June first. Um, the public hearing has to be posted, so we will post that, uh, for our next meeting, so we'd be looking for you to, for us to have a public hearing at the next meeting and take a vote, um, to meet that deadline. And, um, what school choice means is, um, students, depending on enrollment from Lawrence, Andover, Methu, and Haverhill, could come to North Andover. You could pick specific grades, um, that said, due to the enrollment numbers, we are not recommending that North Andover School Committee vote, we are recommending that North Andover School Committee vote not to participate as a receiving district in school choice, um, at this time, and we've never participated. And, and at least as far as I go.
We haven't participated in a very long time. Um, this, this doesn't necessarily, it doesn't prevent our own students from participating in other towns' school choice programs. So if a kid, if, if Haverhill or Andover would ever had school choice, North Andover students could still go through that process for themselves, we're just not going to receive.
Correct.
Students.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this is totally separate from any vocational stuff, right?
This is separate from vocational or special education situations. This is strictly, um, choice, that if we, every year, under the master of law, we have to make a decision whether we're gonna accept kids from other communities, and I think, um, we just have not had the capacity to do so, thus two school building committees and creating the appropriate spaces.
Does any district, uh, does sign up, they do?
Yeah, there's a few, and so, um, I'm only familiar because we get a lot of requests from people that wanna come to North Andover, and, um, I, I keep the list handy at, af, so after June first, DESE will create a list of who's taking students.
And did, did the districts get money for that, or no?
The districts would receive the per pupil spending from.
They get to report them for chapter seventy purposes.
Chapter seventy, I'm sorry.
They get to report those students for chapter seventy purposes.
I see, okay.
But that's, and that's always the year after too, right?
Well, the money comes in there, you're correct.
Okay.
So two quick things, one, I thought we had to accept for all grades, are you saying we couldn't, I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but we could do grade three only? I'm just making it up.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they actually, um, you can, you could, depending on enrollment, so, you know, for example, I was on a baseball field the other day, there was a woman from another community, and, uh, her daughter goes to one school, um, I, she wants to go to the neighboring town. This year, they were accepting eleventh graders, next year, they're not accepting twelfth graders, um, so, you know, it's by, specifically open by grade level, you can specify.
Right.
Hard decisions.
Yep, and then the other quick thing, just so you guys know, it's, uh, we hold a public hearing, which is a meeting within the meeting, so we actually basically will sit here for probably ten minutes or so, um, to see if anybody kind of comes in and joins, uh, during that meeting, so, um, it's just kind of a, it's a play, it's a play within a play, as we said.
Sort of like the, the budget, the budget one.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We only do that twice a year, I think.
So no actions tonight?
Great.
Okay.
Other questions or thoughts? Wonderful, there's no one here from the public, so I don't think there's public comment, so is there emotion to adjourn?
Some move.
Oh, to move in, Jerry? Public, I'm an executive.
Oh, right.
I move that we adjourn the public meeting, and move back into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy regarding negotiations with the North Andover Teachers Association, and not to return back to public session.
Well said.
Second.
Great, uh, and then we need to vote, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are not adjourned, we are now in executive session.